Good evening, everyone. We'll stand for the pledge to start meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, June 6th, 2020. The time being 7:00 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called at this time. Please silence through electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table at the back of the room. Brenda, will you please do a roll call?
Jamie King?
Here.
Daryl Poling?
Here.
Viada McKenzie? Karen Fleetwood?
Here.
Rick Ensweller?
Here.
Okay, we will need to do a quick amendment to the agenda, please. Under where we have Superintendent Danny about employee time reimbursements, we'll need to expand that out to include police, fire, the water plant, and street departments. Is there a motion to make that amendment?
Somebody?
One of those two. All those in favor, signal for us to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. You should have received the minutes from June 1st in your packet. Any amendments to those? Here you guys are, motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify as a aye. Those opposed?
Stayed, not present.
Okay. And you should have received minutes from our special meeting June 22nd. That was our financial meeting with three.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, signal for us to say aye. Those opposed? Okay. Takes us then to old business, ordinance 2020-4. This is the fire pit ordinance. We've added a language under E. And in the first round included a language under F, which is four there.
With no comments, I'll make a motion to approve 2020-4 on the second read.
Second.
All those in favor, signify as a aye. Those opposed? Okay. As a side note, we are working on an enforcement ordinance that goes with the rest of the Fire Prevention Code that allows for rapid response, but we should have that together in August. Up next, we have Police Chief Brendan Bridges with a quick update on fireworks.
Good evening. Just wanted to update everybody on the fireworks, because it's kind of a hot topic this time of year, and it's a new ordinance. In April, we had three firework complaints, and May we had forty. And then on June 1st to 18th, we had three. So just wanted to let the council know, everybody complains, and let them know that we are responding. We are giving warnings, first warnings, and then if we need to cite, we will cite and that. So again, this Fourth of July, all across the country, I think, was worse than ever, just because everybody was home with COVID, and we didn't have the community fireworks. So everybody decided to have them at home. So just like I said, wanted to update you on that. And then real quick, this is on the agenda, but just figured an update on the other ordinance that was passed this year, the UTV ordinance. So far, we have fifty-three registrations, and currently, nobody has violated any ordinance laws with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Chief Stermer about some additional appropriations for badges.
Good evening. As I stated earlier on, we took on redesigning, kind of rebranding, the badge of the Greensburg Fire Department. I'm happy to say that that is complete. I have a copy, a workable demo tonight, to, if you care to see it. With the cost of badges, the department is going to be issuing one per member with your approval of the expenditure tonight, and then they will be additional badges that they can purchase on their own. I'm requesting permission to spend no more than $4,988 of our existing 2020 budget on the new badges. This would allow us to buy the badges in one fail swoop, instead of having to make several different purchases. That way, they can all come in at the same time, and as we do promotion ceremonies and badge pending ceremonies early next year for new firefighters, everybody would be in their new badge itself. Again, I'm asking for no additional appropriation. This is money that's currently in our operating budget, just to go over the expenditure amount that is allowed by the department heads, as well as approval of the mayor.
That's strictly $5,000, but there was a previous component to this that sort of makes the project a little bit.
Right, and that was taken out of our line item as well, and that was right at about $3,000, or is it right at $3,000? So it would be right at $7,988 for the total project.
I'll make a motion that Chief can spend up to $49.88 on his badge.
That includes shipping, right?
That does include shipping. That's why it's such an odd number. I figured that today.
Those in favor, signify as a aye. Those opposed? Okay. Up next, we have Street Commissioner Crawford Camper. First one up is the trash tipping fees and the increased discussion surrounding that.
Everybody should have got an updated spreadsheet. We had our heavy trash day back there near the end of May. If you'll notice, the upper section shows the cost of what that week cost us. I think it's self-explanatory, but we never had an amount of that. It was $48,589.18. We started looking at the cost of trash and what we're collecting of fees and what we're incurring. Probably came to light after the reading presentation that was given to all you that showed that our trash tipping fee is in the red going forward. It's one of the four or five different funds they showed on that page that had a red item. So what I've done, I've calculated the weekly cost for trash collection. This is based on a two-year running average of costs we've incurred. I put in a fuel cost, truck replacement cost, repair costs, which have been extremely low, and the labor cost. And the bottom line is, right now, for the two heavy trash days and our weekly trash collecting, we are spending approximately $357,500. And this is only the trash portion. By the time you take into account what we do for yard waste, what we do for leaves, what we do for brush collection, I would say it could easily be 50% more on top of that. But that just gives you an idea. That cost, based on what each resident is costing a month for just the trash service alone, works out to about $7.84 per house per month for trash. We are currently charging?
Seven eighty-four?
Seven eighty-four. We currently charge $350. We've held that constant the entire time I've been here. And if you look at the one spreadsheet where I showed our historical tipping fees, you will see there's probably been close to a 30% increase in that time for what we've even paid at the landfill, and we've paid that cost continuously for the last ten years. The third piece of information you have in front of you is we conducted a phone survey and contacted as many communities as we were able to get a hold of to get an idea of where prices are statewide. I think we came up with a total of fifty-one communities, tried to talk to each one of them at length. I just didn't want a price. I wanted to know where they're at, how they charge, what they're anticipating for cost increases. That's why you see the various notes. I mean, there's just about any way to belt for trash that you can imagine if you look through there. I mean, these people are charged by the bag. They have multiple rates based on multiple totter sizes. They're pretty much all over the charts. A lot of them are looking at increases because they're incurring a lot of additional costs that they've never had to anticipate before. I did not run the total, but I think the average is probably somewhere around $13 or $14 in that ballpark if you just run through all of those. I had discussions with the mayor. I know it's not going to be a popular item, but we're going to have to do something.
Any specific questions for information presented?
I appreciate all the effort you went through to get the other cities. I think that was really helpful, just kind of looking at this.
And I can tell you, some of those are contracted. Some of them are done in-house. The ones that are contracting are the ones that are probably getting hit a hardish because they're going to see the greatest increases coming here shortly. I was a little bit astounded. I think Greenfield was one of them. I don't remember who the other community was. They simply got out of it altogether. I think the city of Greenfield said they got four trash services, and each resident has to make arrangements to contract their trash on their own independently. So they've got four different companies driving around town on different days with garbage trucks all over picking up trash. And they said the average cost to the customer is about $17 to $18 a month. And I ask also, most of the people that are contracting, it does not include brush, it doesn't include water漂，and it doesn't include leaves. That's strictly for the trash portion.
Or heavy trash.
Or heavy trash. No, there's all kinds of charges for heavy trash. I've seen some for a dollar. I've seen some of them for $20 a night. So when you look at the value of what we're getting, and based off the $7.84 that I calculated per household, figure 50% again of that for the other services we provide, which is probably way low, that comes up to about $12 a month. And if I had to make the recommendation, that's what I would recommend.
Do you agree?
I think, not to have to deal with this, if you noticed, there was a couple of them. I can't remember. I know Carmel was one of them. When they actually passed theirs, they didn't want to have to go back and deal with it on an annual basis. They've got a three and a half or four percent cost of inflation built right into the rate, so they don't ever have to deal with it with big hits. They just add 34 or 45, whatever that works out to that year for the additional increase, and you got it going forward, and you don't have the shock of people like you do when you have to do something like what we're proposing. I know this is a lot to absorb. I don't think.
Well, it comes, you know, at a time where we continue to talk about the budget and what that looks like, and trying to match CCMG money, community cost of patching money, the grant projects that we have to put up money against continually. And this fund kind of continues to be one that we subsidize a lot, as you can tell with Mark's numbers. So it's a big impact, and it will go, it's not like we're not using that money somewhere else. We're going to use it elsewhere, which will help in other general fund accounts and MTH funding, things like that. As we look at what next year's motor vehicle fund looks like and what damage COVID will cause to that, it's kind of another argument for why we need to be sustaining ourselves, at least on this side of the opportunity.
So the increases, we'll do that in ordinance law?
Yeah.
And so I guess maybe we can debate how we do it. I mean, I don't think we want to jump to $12 an hour, $350 to $12 an hour. Maybe we do between, yeah.
An hour.
Wow, that's, wow, that's really.
Jamie, your house would spend four hours a day, so your trash bill took $16 a month. It's okay.
I'll get my, I'll get my hours a day straight down here. Instead of going $12 a month, maybe we do, we double it and go to seven. And then a year from now, we add on an additional, I don't know, we phase it in, I guess is what I'm thinking, versus just doing it all. Or we just do it all.
I think we could, I mean, the water was over three years, which is a long time. This, I don't think we can sustain for three years. You know, if there was something, we wanted to maybe do something. We could do second, maybe some type of commitment to pick the dollar numbers up. Put it together. Next month, we have aspect two in there. And then it could go into effect in September, in the end of the half, and then at the first of the year, so that our budget can be built with a number that is consistent through the year.
I didn't mention it at all, and I don't know where the current situation's at. This is all based on the fact that we have a landfill in the town. I know they're going to be a lot greater for several years. Hopefully pass all of our timeframes, but I have done calculations. Something drastic would happen, that would also add about $133,000 more to our cost of trash. It's not reflected in any of this. And that's why a couple of these communities that were really high that I've talked to, they do not even have a landfill in their town. One of them, you know, was trucking at like 34 miles one way every load of trash.
So you're saying we haven't had an increase since you've been?
It's been $3.50 since I came here.
My question is, over that period of time, do you know about what the fee has been in the landfill?
If you will look at the one spreadsheet you have in front of you, Daryl, that shows the monthly charges, I got to find mine. It's the one that doesn't have any gridlines. This one right here. If you look over in the far column, I did not go all the way back to the beginning, but if you'll notice, the black number is the average. The red number is when they increased the price. So in fourteen, it was $13.75. In fifteen, they raised it to fifteen. In sixteen, they raised it to $15.50, and right now, we are currently at $17.85. I did spoke to Decatur Hills, and they're anticipating another price increase probably before the end of the year. And he wouldn't give me, he wouldn't give me a number. He said the last one was 5%. Don't be surprised if this one got to be 5.00. So we'll probably afford another 90% per yard of trash on top of that, which means they hit us to about $6,000 annually. Like I said, we've done everything we can. We switched to the toters. We've reduced the labor cost on the back of it. You know, we have bought high compaction trucks because we pay by the cubic yards, so that we get more tons in a yard, don't pay the landfill fees. I can't pull that magic out of the hat to get it any lower.
What's our budget?
It's light one.
Okay.
I'd not propose that we wait until January. Maybe we can figure something out when we pass it, get it started, and then maybe after the beginning of the year, we go next, or next phase, or.
Well, I think you would. I know you all want to think about it. I don't blame you. Not only a popular decision, but I think it's a necessary decision. When you look at what everybody else is doing, I mean, I understand. But I think if you could have something for us to work with when we get to July 20th?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be nice. Can you do something like that? Then we at least get through a first reading, even if we make amendments to.
Well, if you give us something to start to put the ordinance together on the 20th, like we can have it for you for the August meeting. But at least that way, we got a point to start from.
Well, if you're saying an average of $7.84 per household, I think we have to at least.
Try to cover that.
We have to cover that much, and we at least want to cover $40.
Right, that's just a trash. That's trash all the time.
I'm just saying, what we do in two phases, I, in my opinion, would have to at least.
So if we put something together, maybe get us to neutral on that for this year, and then we look at what Phase Two is, let's use January one as a number, so that we can figure out, and we can work on getting the right numbers to the financial people so that the 2021 budget would reflect what you will hopefully agree to in either the August and September meeting. Does that make sense? Whereas we can make that effective immediately upon passage, which would be the following monthly.
Take it issue though?
Yes. So we're probably October at the end of the year, so can we give an August, September effective and October?
Yeah.
So we'll look at that as far as September zones.
It'll give us time, our budget meeting.
Yeah.
Get it around. We can start drafting some ordinance.
Right.
And getting that prepared and leave a lot of blanks in it.
And then what's, while we're on the topic, what's the thought on the annual increments? Because everything does continue to go up. We run into that every year. Do you want us to put it in there and mark the rest of the numbers of what that looks like maybe over the next ten years? And then we can look at it then.
What if we, when we're drafted, let's say 3%, and let's just see what it looks like, what it says, and then we can only make changes or adjustments to that when we get to ordinance. But when we draft this.
I will put it together, and like I said, everything will be tentative, and we'll have something for you at the July 20th meeting. And there will be a blank line, like, just thought to go at it. We can discuss it further at that point in time and what's involved.
Is that work? Is there a motion to table this discussion? For a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify as a aye. Those opposed? Up next, we have additional appropriation to the first three paving project. Mark, if you don't mind refreshing everybody, maybe you'll have a real good.
First off, I want to thank you for the time you took to come out and look at our situation. I was asking a little above and beyond, but I think it was pretty dire and it was necessary, and we're commended for your effort. I told you I tried to put you together with a good estimate. I've been in touch with civil contractors, tried to get an average price. Tried to come up with a reasonable amount of area based on what we have, we think the scope of the project's going to be. You'll see the cost estimate is $55,378. Yes, I ran it under near a dollar, made it easier. And instead, we've been looking at fund report. I printed one out this morning. I know we talked about possibly rainy day. We also talked about riverboat. One has a balance of 270. The other one has 563,000, the riverboat being larger. I don't know what your wishes are. I did not have a fund report in the packet. I apologize, but I look at the duty specifically asked about.
Hold the timeline on the getting it done.
Right now, the pavement portion isn't a big deal. Contractor to get the large excavator in, you got a possible couple of other alternatives. Right now, the one is the sub for the current paving contractor is not available. Omer was not available. Mopfo is not available, but we're still looking. I think the key is I got to get everybody tied in. I don't want it closed for two weeks. Like I said, I want to get it dug out, get the repairs made, have it back under traffic like in three days or closer, at the most. I would say probably looking at ten to thirty days before we do it. They did get it skimmed enough just to protect what's there and put some better rideability back into the road. We sent out letters last week letting all the property owners know what was going on as to why it hasn't been resurfaced, so they're aware of what the situation is. I think most of them understand. The ones we talked to while we were out there said, fix it till the damn poles don't come back. Excuse my language. That's what we're going to do.
Mark, the 55,878 is under what's casing there?
I don't know.
Would that do the entire section?
That's got everything that we talked about from one end of what's exposed to the other. And allows a little bit, if we have to creep across the centerline, or we have to go a little farther to the west. I think I added 10 or 15%. So it gave us a little more. And, you know, and maybe when we get into it, we start finding better material quicker than we thought, it could be a lot less. I did look at the worst case, where we'd have to go from one end of the street to the other, all the way across town. But everything that we had in the section that was exposed, that had not had any kind of overlay over, it was all calculated with just a little bit above and beyond.
All right. I guess we need the actual ordinance form for the additional appropriation. Take it out of the riverboat.
Do you want to move that much?
Yes.
And we will get the additional appropriation ordinance to you, because I won't have it funded immediately. Contractors will understand.
Yeah, I just want to do a motion on that, something to the dollar nine fund, and write it down for the next.
Yes. I'm going to say yes.
I'll make the motion to prepare for a street, for the detailed supplement, the estimate to $55,878 from the Puck's coming out of the riverboat.
He approved the full amount coming out of the riverboat fund, and it will be ordinance number, whatever you tell us it is. 2020-. -dash five.
What does it give?
2020-dash-five, we could do ordinance.
I'll say.
All those in favor, signify as a aye. Those opposed? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
You all have a letter, a copy of the letter that Mark and I sent all the residents on the street explaining the delay in the construction project, and I want tonight's meeting to get that posted online for everybody as well. We now come to employee time reimbursement. We have Superintendent Danny listed as that, but unless you have some further thing that you want to pitch in, we'll go through it. Let me know if we get something wrong.
That's fine.
We had some employees who were either tested positive for COVID or were required to self-quarantine or take time off due to potential exposure across multiple departments in the city. And April 1, the federal program which allowed for two paid weeks off, up to 80 hours, went into effect for anyone who requested time because of potential COVID exposures. We had to post all that information. So these that you have on your list are employees that were either mandated to take time off, tested positive, and were required to take time off that need, or that are requesting, if you will, their time reimbursed to, they had to use personal time, paid sick time, vacation days, or something like that. So you'll note that most of these days in before April 1, the ones that overlap are just due to the period of time for the paid period. They are across the different departments. The only, yeah, that's the bulk of it. Anything else on your?
No, I'm covered. Thank you.
So I guess we're asking, it's not a, they're not getting paid for this time. I think the only way they could probably monetize it would be if they retired with days still in their bank that we do pay out. Or you pay extra time off for, I guess somebody has too many hours in their. Or you pay extra time off for, like if somebody has too many hours in their bank, do you pay that out? No? Okay.
We do.
You do.
But that's not, if it's approved for sick time, they can only do that to their paid time off, their PTO balance, so they couldn't, the only way they could do it is if they've been here for the amount of time to cash out sick time, otherwise, there's no monetary value to it.
Right. And it's, okay, thank you. And it's not a check writing event, we're just reimbursing them back into the HR system. If you approve it, what we have in front of us, we'll just need to sign one of these, it's sort of a letter that Julie, Navi, and the HR department will put in a file for statewide accounts, should they come and ask where that came from. Any questions? Okay, so, take a motion to refund these employees their time?
Someone?
Say.
We're talking the police, fire, and water plant?
In the street, in the street. The street, yeah. Okay, uh, motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just be sure we all get this one up here signed before we leave. Up next, we have Ashley with the Decatur County Animal Control and Shelter, good evening.
Hello. Did everybody get to read over the information that I submitted last week? So, just to kind of go over it, what I proposed to the animal control ward is that we start an application process, which is going to be twenty dollars per application. We'll keep it on file for six months, and that is non-refundable, even if the adoption is declined or your application expires. My hope is that in doing this, the application process will take off, and then in about five years, we can stop requesting the extra fifteen thousand to help the stay and neutering of the animals, because we'll have a nice fund to start pooling from, instead of relying on it, that can be paid for donations to help support that.
Okay. You've also brought a copy of your proposed budget.
Yes, yes, I did.
So did you, did you, okay, so did you still need a request for the additional fifteen thousand that we talked about?
Yeah, so, yep, so the fifteen thousand will be split between the city and the county, so seventy-five hundred each, and then I also included that in next year's budget.
Counsel, first question about the seventy-five hundred?
And I know that it's something that was mentioned a couple of months ago, when this was first proposed, who the council was looking at different places to get the animals feed and neuter, um, and the petalide clinic that we used to go through, they shut down for twenty twenty. Here at Animal Medical.
I guess I thought we were just looking at the budget tonight, I didn't really, we discussed that.
Has the county already committed to the seventy-five hundred?
Yes, yeah.
I guess I was sort of, I, I kind of forgot about that conversation as well. Would you guys want me to try to find some place to, to cover that out of the general budget, just as a side? Instead of going through the whole additional appropriation, you know?
Quick question. So the fifteen thousand you're asking for this year, you're gonna ask for another additional fifteen thousand for next year? You're starting the twenty dollar application process now? So your hope, your entire base of numbers, you're thinking two year, this year, next year, third year, twenty dollar application program fee, should be able to be in place to have your own set for your budget?
Correct, yes, so we'll be able to withdraw the fifteen thousand dollar request each year on the budget, because that should sustain us long enough to be able to cover the spay and neutering of the animals. And that is strictly what this spend is for, is to cover just the fixing of the animals, the help with overpopulation.
Can you remind me what our adoption fees are?
Um, so we are a hundred dollars for dogs, seventy-five for cats, and then we actually updated the puppies, so anything six months and younger is going to be a hundred and twenty-five, so we did raise those prices beginning on June first.
So you have, you have an idea where you can take that money?
Not really, because you all appropriate baseline item to animal control. This year, I think you appropriated fifty-five thousand?
I believe that's about right.
Animal controller group is fifty-five thousand, it's a line item you're attracted. Oh, we could probably find a, a kind of place to, I don't know, a way to mention.
I'm just like, you want to be cleaner, just to say lots taken from this account?
Because account is the service in charge? Any other questions?
How much money did you have allocated in riverboat, or maybe ready data? It hasn't been specified.
Kind of rattles the question back.
Yeah, I would say, I would also show that riverboat's pretty broad in its application, but I would guess that the riverboat needs us to kind of take it out of it. I think if you wanted, if you wanted to call it a service in charge, I don't think awarding counsel for your barrel is going to be too hard, uh, based on the fact that it is for the purposes of offsetting the cost of the spay and neuter, which is your service.
About eighteen thousand left in the riverboat, that's already been appropriated.
That seems to be where the money's at anyway, in riverboats.
And we could just do that, they sent it to us.
I'll make a motion to take the seventy-five hundred dollars out of the riverboat.
Offside. All those in favor, say goodbye, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now let's shift to the budget a little bit.
Thank you.
Your budget?
Oh, yeah.
So, you've submitted a budget this year of two-hundred-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. So the city share of that comes out to about a hundred and ten, correct? We just discussed last year, there was a fifty-five thousand appropriation due, which means you're fifty thousand dollars higher.
Yes, and the reason that it looks so large, sorry, my computer at work was not printing my budget, was because we had to include the FICA, the PERF, and insurance, so if you take those out, it's really not that much higher, but on the first page, you'll see where all of the insurance and everything had to be included, and we were told we had to include those figures in next year's budget, so that's why it seems so substantially higher.
So did you move from a part-time person to full-time people?
Yep, we've been full-time all year.
Okay.
So what's the request from the city for next year?
It would be half of what's on there, I did contact Chrissy at the auditor's office, because I wanted clarity on if you guys have to pay into our insurance, because it's never been listed on our budget before, for FICA, PERF, or anything like that, but she did say it has to be fifty-fifty, so we have to start listing it in our budget.
Of course, we have our budget meeting, uh, so we just do that, we don't have to make a decision that night, obviously, but we'll put in the full requested amount, and then we'll all decide what that looks like. Any other questions for Ashley to answer here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You too. Okay, up next, Eric Free, nine-one-one. Hello?
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Fine, thanks.
Um, so, the mayor asked me to come in prior to your license meeting at the end of this month, um, to kind of have a conversation about what our budget is, um, because it has increased a little bit. We are asking for an additional dispatch position next year, um, however, um, insurance costs on our end went down about the amount of adding an additional position, um, so it's pretty close to a wash. Um, the increase actually comes from, obviously, with the addition of salary, we also have to include benefits for that position, FICA, PERF, all of that, um, so that's where that increase of dollar amount is coming from. Um, so we noticed, uh, there's a couple of big factors. First, we're actually coming in and asking for it, um, because we're working alongside with the fire departments in Decatur County and Greensburg, um, to move forward with their eight-hundred radio project. Um, it's going to provide, obviously, first responder safety on their side of the radio, um, but then it also increases some workload on our side as they have the project written, um, with some additional ops channels and, and some of the different details they have in there. Um, so we are asking for that additional position in order to man the dispatch center, um, three dispatchers at a time, twenty-four hours a day, um, so that allows the dispatcher to deal with Greensburg, a dispatcher to deal with Decatur County, and a dispatcher to deal with the fire departments.
What's the current staff?
Um, right now, we have, uh, minimum staffing is two people, uh, between four PM and usually about midnight, we try to keep it at three, just because that's our higher call volume time. Um, but even with the exception of the Fire Eight Hundred project, um, we noticed during COVID, um, I think the fire chief said it best in one of our advisory board meetings, nine-one-one kind of became four-one-one. Um, so if you didn't know what the travel status was, or if you didn't know if you were allowed to go to work, um, or, you know, where the school meals we're going to deliver that day, um, dispatch is kind of the central hub where everybody calls for that information. And that's always been, I mean, they call us starting in February dash, when the fireworks are going to be, so, I mean, that's always kind of been something that we, we weeded through, um, but we did notice the increase with, um, the COVID and the uncertainty with that. So obviously, what we're looking at now is, we didn't expect it to happen, but it happened, um, so now we're trying to staff and plan for when it happens again, versus if, and now we're caught without the necessary staffing. So those.
We feel like that's a permanent position we need, or maybe we have some people, we could have some part-time people train them to fill in for, in case there's a need for something like that. I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, we're gonna, you're talking about hiring a full-time person, paying a benefit salary, for something that we might need, we might need to happen, the eight-hundred project, something's going to be, we'll get through that, and that'll take a short time, training, getting everybody up to speed, and that will be.
So the eight-hundred project is going to be a permanent thing.
Right, but getting that going is why you need the extra.
No, the fire departments are wanting to add operations channels, um, so we would have three additional channels to monitor for the fire departments, permanent, long-term. Um, so that, that's why that dispatcher relates to that Fire Eight Hundred project, not the actual getting going, um, we're able to actually move through into what we already need to do with the Fire Eight Hundred project right now, um, but in order to continue it as written by their plan, um, we're going to need an additional dispatch position. Um, it increases what they're monitoring fire-wise to, um, four to five total channels, um, where right now they're monitoring two. Um, so, we need an entire body to be able to monitor those, um, and then also, I mean, law enforcement call volume is just five times probably what fire runs are, so they need their own separate person as well. Um, so that's more of a long-term, I mean, that's not just for the duration of getting the Fire Eight Hundred project going, that's to maintain how they have that plan written now.
I guess I, it'd be helpful if I could visualize like a schedule, um, I don't know if that's something you could get as, like what you're currently staffing, and how you're scheduling it, and then versus, you know, why you need the extra person, where the extra person to fill in on that schedule, it would just help you visualize it.
Sure, so the extra person right now would be a day shift person, um, because we have a day shift supervisor and a night shift supervisor, and we work two rotations of dispatchers, um, so when this rotation is working, this rotation is off. Um, so one rotation holds that day shift supervisor position, um, so they staff three with that supervisor's position, um, and then this additional position would allow for the other shift to have, because that's where we're lacking the coverage. Um, it's normally anywhere between three AM and six AM, best case scenario, um, we have two in there, but on the shift that does not have a supervisor, they work basically their entire daytime hours, just two dispatchers. Um, so even just adding one position would allow for, it allows, that's kind of what I'm explaining to the center, is it allows for more people in the center, not more people to be able to be off from the center, um, sort of, it gives us that additional staffing. Right now, we're only allowing one dispatcher off a day, and even on that, we're only able to guarantee maintain two dispatchers in there during daytime hours, um, so that's where this position would fall out.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't prevent that, you still only get a lot of the top one off a day.
Sure, right, and that's what I've explained to them, is we're not adding positions to be able to add people out of the center, we're adding positions in order to be able to have people within the center, to maintain that three people twenty-four hours a day.
So using the money that comes from lower insurance costs for this year to hire someone, it's a little bit dangerous, because insurance costs can go up.
Sure.
So what's the plan?
So, um, I mean, we talked about that a little bit in the advisory board meeting, the potential of hiring, let's say, two part-timers to fill the role that we need as, as a full-timer. It's really hard to find people willing to do the dispatch job without the, with the amount of hours that we would need them, minus the benefits that would go along with it. Um, so we talked about one of, one of, potentially, the resolutions would be to increase our part-time rate, um, to kind of draw maybe some other dispatchers in who are doing it full-time somewhere else, and then would still do it part-time for us. Um, the problem is, right now, a full-time dispatcher, we train them about fourteen weeks, um, and that's kind of, honestly, bare minimum, if you get somebody who has no experience, um, that's fourteen weeks on forty hours a week. Um, so if we can't find any dispatchers who want to come part-time, um, we're now down to, just say, twenty hours a week, so now that doubles that training time, so now we're training them almost half a year before we ever even benefit from having that position. Um, so I'm not, I think it's kind of a double-edged sword, if insurance goes up next year, then we have to have this conversation, where's that money coming from now, because we've added a position, and insurance has gone up. But if it doesn't go up, then now we've added it at minimum call, I mean, it's, I guess, kind of both ways, I don't, I don't know that I've ever necessarily seen where when we're talking about adding positions, it's ever been as a, well, what happens if insurance goes up, because, I mean, we're, at this point, we are an essential, we've got to have bodies in the center to do the job, um, and as the workload increases, then that's a direct effect, obviously, on the dispatchers as well. So it's what I would consider an absolute essential addition, but I know that the money has to come from somewhere, so.
Any other questions for Eric on that? Same thing with animal shelter, of course, we've got our meeting in July.
Right.
Do you know, so in twenty-twenty, you had requested five-hundred-twenty-one thousand from the city, this year requesting five-twenty-seven, the twenty-twenty budget has four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
So it's four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for dispatch, um, and then I think they put Josh's IT position in a separate line, and I believe it's an additional, like, sixty- And I believe it's an additional like sixty-six. Um, so I pulled off a gateway because what initially happened was I submitted my budget to the city and the county and asked for a number and then both the city and the county over budgeted what I asked for. Um, so I'm not complaining about that at all, but, um, the city last year, I believe, it was four fifty for dispatch and then sixty-six thousand for that network engineer position. So it was five hundred and sixteen thousand total. Um, and then the county actually made up the difference between the five sixteen and five twenty-one shortfall plus their five twenty-one with what they had over budgeted. Um, the biggest issue was I always have to submit my budget to the nine-one-one board first before then it comes to you guys. Um, so my budget is usually done a month prior to city and county budgets being done. So we found out last year as county employees, I had put in for like a four hundred dollar raise for the dispatchers. Um, and countywide across the board, they were giving all the employees twelve hundred dollar raises. But that was not gonna count my employees because we had already had our budget blessed by the nine-one-one board, so I couldn't go back and change it. Um, so I sat down with the auditor's office and then I went to the county council and talked about them or talked to them. Um, what the county had actually over budgeted, what covered, I think, within like four hundred dollars of what we needed to go ahead and give the dispatchers the twelve hundred dollar raise at all.